That will lead us up into the council meeting where there is a public hearing. The public will be invited to come and speak and discuss and ask questions about the budgets, or make their comments as well. And that will be in the regular council session at 7:05. So, I'm gonna ask, as we start, that Secretary take the roll, just for attendance.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Carney?
On her way. Counselor Carney is on her way. She just sent the note.
Counselor Specter?
He's, I think, away with his shoes.
Officer O'Donnell?
Here.
Counselor Sierra?
Here.
Counselor Murphy?
Here.
Counselor LeBarge?
Present.
Counselor Klein?
Excuse us.
Counselor Boy.
Okay.
So first up, Chief Sinkowitz is here from the Northampton Police Department. This is on your budget book. It's on page 51. And Chief, you have the floor.
Okay. You have in the book the one-page summary with all the detail about the finances of the past years and this year, so I won't go into that a great deal. But I did, had originally done a much more expansive narrative that really highlights a lot of the successes we've had since during the fiscal year 2014. I handed it out at the Public Safety Committee in April, so I brought some for you all here today. And it's pretty expansive. We see a lot of the great work that people do to give them to public.
Oh, same presentation?
Same.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
So, it's a good opportunity for us to kind of showcase our kind of more in-depth manner than, trying to distill it all down on one page. And my comment sheet, the one page, I do report the fact that we are on track to live well within our budget again this fiscal year. So, I think it's my 20th budget that I've been able to successfully do that, something I'm very proud of. But you also have two internal financial transfers on your agenda tomorrow. I wonder if it'd be appropriate just to chat about them now if you have any questions and send me a trip to City Council?
We could do that as well. So, yeah.
Yes, one for a $29,527 transfer. It's an insurance check for a patrol SUV that was involved in a rollover accident in March of this year at 1:43 a.m. up on Audubon Road. It's an outstanding deal that the insurance company is giving us. And you already approved a previous $10,000 transfer from Personal Services to OM, which combined will give us, be able to replace the tire, suplex nuts, all the equipment, et cetera, in it. So, get a brand-new car for basically $10,000. And I'm gonna hope that you would consider two reeves. I sent a memo to the Council President about it, because they are our dealer, IMP, just by a handshake is holding on to their last 2013 leftover for us. It's all ready to go. And if I can get the vote tomorrow, I can execute the contract, and they'll want to lease it, and I'll save $2,000 of extra money.
Actually, on that, on that item, on the request, and it's in your agenda, should be in the agenda, yeah.
There's a note.
I mean, in your packet. So, any questions relevant to that? To the, this is related to a rollover that occurred a couple of months ago on Audubon Road?
Dark and stormy night.
Dark and stormy night? One of the brand-new?
Nobody got injured. The officer climbed up, he was fine.
It was brand-new?
This is our first round of two-year-olds. Round, sorry, 2013. The road was just foggy. He just claims he nodded off. His wheel caught the gully and it just pulled him a little bit. So, it's outside of media training about being tired.
Being tired, right. So, there were no questions relevant to those two items? Okay. Then we'll be able to discuss that more in finance tomorrow in the council meeting.
And the other one was just, again, FY14. I'll give that. It was $50,170, which is from PS to OM police equipment. And this is an officer-initiated idea. They want to reestablish the color guard, the under guard. We have dress A blouse uniform that they want to dress up a little bit. They said, "There's not a lot of money to do this, we're not replacing everything," so they went and got everybody's old pillows and cleaned them up. And basically, this amounts to some tailoring and some other things. Everybody's excited about it. It's a great morale builder. And they're all looking forward to, I do have ample money in PS for this. This $15,000 transfer will take care of everything, everybody's dress jacket. So, the guys, the guys and girls, we truly appreciate it. They're really excited about it.
Counselors, who might recall, there used to be a pretty common parade representation in the police department and with a color guard. I mean, my only complaint was they made us look kind of like movies. It just kind of showed us up a little bit, but...
You're gonna see some other things. We've had a lot of ideas over the past several months about changing uniforms, their no-cost things, all things for comfort, looks. Everybody's looking forward to it. This is kind of the combination, but this is one that has actually costed us. I appreciate the consideration and the votes, so we can get the tailors in there, get the work done, get the voice of the district there.
Counselors, have any questions of the chief about the police department budget as presented in budget book?
Do you want to talk about FY15 a little bit?
I'd as well. Yeah, looks like...
Just give you the highlights.
I don't see any questions, so, so far.
Okay. I figured I'd say it and give the questions. I mean, basically, what's written in here is the same thing I'm briefly gonna talk about. I mean, it's really a pleasure, out of all the years I've been doing this, the 20 years as chief, not to have to do less with more, have a level of services, a level-funded budget. The great work that the Finance Director's done, and the citizens voting for the override. That helps maintain all the personnel that are budgeted for. We're working through that. And it's nice just to sit down and do a budget with some thought about things that you might want to improve on and add to. So, I thank the mayor so much for that, and the voters. I mean, overall, the total budget is just under a 2% increase. Some of that is in OM, a total of $45,000. I've jumped up the amount of training, because we have a very young department, a lot of their supervisors that require more specialized training, which is Recruit Academy. So, there's a bump in that area. I approximated about a 5% fuel increase cost for the year. I've been pretty good on that year-to-year. Again, we're getting much more heavy into more complicated forensic investigations, so I've increased their budget by a few thousand dollars, because we are doing much more, and it's required because of what is required by court. Because, you know, juries like the, juries like the, you know, proof beyond reasonable doubt, a DNA confirmation on a crime, we don't do that, but they certainly need some more supplies. Also, in this fiscal year, used to go to transfer from, I forget what the account was, but for kill, care and kill costs. We've now rolled that over into the animal control line item, so I built the increase and covered that. So, it comes right out of my budget now. OM was increased by $11,000. That's a reflection of, that's the three cruisers we get in parking reserves. That's reflecting on what the anticipated increase in cost for the streetcars. And then we had two extra paydays. We have to calculate it, which is $18,672 for FY15. So, again, it's just shy of 2%. We have one outstanding contract that's pending. Our revenues down a little bit to about $185,000, with all the fees and permits and citations and et cetera. That's it in a nutshell.
Counselor Adams and Counselor Murphy?
What does it mean that you have to factor in two extra days of payroll? I see it under, I don't know what that means.
It's five.
You have to, we have to speak, it's okay. And let me just make a general statement. It'd help if everyone speak loud enough so this camera can pick it up, okay? So that...
And I'll tell you if it's that, because I'm right next to her.
There you go. Okay. Counselor Adams, I'm sorry.
Chief said that they had to factor in two extra days of payroll, which is in the budget book. I didn't understand what that meant.
Just, I've heard through the schedule, the calendar year, some years were two days short, some years were two or three days more. This is a year that we're two days higher. There's really 367 paydays in the fiscal year for FY15. So, we have to calculate in those two extra paydays. Is that a correct way of describing it?
Correct. A normal year has 26 pay periods, but there may be a couple of days to get you to the end of June. They have to get booked for the previous, so it ends up in the next year, I think we'll be at 26.2.
Every year, it's a little one way or the other.
It's always 26, and then it's either 26 plus some.
What's up?
No, I just didn't see that in every department, so I was wondering if it was unique to this department or something.
Does it jive with other departments, anyway?
Every department has a budget of 26.2 if they're a 24/7 department, or 26.1 if they're a regular department. Because I think in this particular pay period, it'd be on a Sunday and a Monday.
Sunday and a Saturday, probably?
Yeah. I think that.
Saturday and Sunday. However broken the payroll is.
But every, every department has been adjusted for the required number of pay periods. We never used to have to do this. We only used to have to budget for 26 pay periods, but a couple of years ago, the Department of Revenue said they, they didn't want the timing, so the first paycheck you get in July is often for two weeks prior that were worked in June. So, they want, they insisted that all communities then take that first paycheck in July and actually book it back to the previous fiscal year. So, now, each fiscal year represents exactly the number of days that were in that fiscal year that were worked.
Counselor Murphy?
Well, could you update us? I know one of the things that helps control overtime is keeping all of your positions filled. You want to update us? Because I know you've got people in the academy now, and a couple more promotions coming, and maybe another hire. So, could you just let us know where we are with the new personnel coming on board?
All the promotions are in place. If you got these two lieutenant, I'm too sorry, these are all done. As I described in Public Safety, we did over staggered a period of time, so there wouldn't be such dramatic change in everything, plus it kind of stretched out the number of options we have in the street. We've since hired back to Northampton police officers, but the retired, one retired from State Police wasn't a Northampton officer. And now, he's working as a special filling on downtown, as well as Ex-Sergeant Trushai. He's a special police officer, so that helps fill in some of the older time. We started with eight people in the last academy class. One of them quit the afternoon of the first day. There's no way you can replace him. We have seven that are gonna graduate. We have full expectations. They're some of the best members of the class, and that's in two weeks. They will start their 16-week field training program immediately. We had, we have four scheduled, but the next academy, which is in August. We may be adding a fifth, because I may have a determined that someone's talking about. And I've got a fifth in the queue already. Of those four, one of them is an officer who was gonna go to the academy, and the week before the academy started, he got called up and got deployed. He's since come back. He's been back and been, leading all this field training program and advancing the academy. So, once he goes to the academy and gets the certification, he'll come back, probably do a couple-day review of any new policies that came out. He'll be ready for the streetwear and all that. And he's been doing a great job. So, around about November, absent any other surprises, we will be back, police staff, with our allocated budget. And we still, from the last test, have some good folks in the queue, should things happen.
And I know in our budget book, there's still a vacant sergeant in the past position, but they've been, people have been moved into those slots since this was done.
These things were done in transition. But the money's there, just not the name.
Just not the name.
Yep.
Counselor LeBarge?
Chief, the DMH mental health first aid and crisis intervention, and you're still continuously doing that. Could you give me a little update on that, about the training itself, and how much is involved with that?
Well, the mental health first aid is a grant that was first written using the outside of the state PPA as a real pilot project. And it was so successful, it's a 24-hour train. It actually teaches officers more clinical diagnostic techniques. So, when dealing with people on the street, you're not just using your classical enforcement, you arrest them or summons them or whatever. They're more able, better able to assist the people and divert them. It's called the jail erosion program for DMH. And because we were so successful with our first group of, I think, 18 officers, we've since got everybody trained. And it's 24 hours, and it was paid for by them. We now have, based on that model, it is now a core curriculum at Recruit Academy. And some people, I think even Terry Masters, has sent me an article about New York PD in New York Times, saying New York PD is gonna be doing this. So, we're kind of a leader in that area. And the crisis intervention team is fewer people, but at a higher level. We deal with so many people trying to harm themselves, motion disturbed people, people with multi-substance abuse issues. We have a large population of traumatic brain injury, TBI, folks from the soldier on, the tiny war veterans. And they exhibit signs of, you need a little more clarity about how to do it, how to talk it. And actually, also, buried in that is some autistic, how to approach autistic children. You know, not scare them, but get to the point and be available. That level has given us the opportunity with several officers in every shift, to be able to respond to certain particular calls. And they end up, it's usually the same people, so they develop a relationship with this person. So, now, when we have the Section 12, they have clinical support options, Mercy Services team. And it's a phone call. They go, "Yep, yep, you got that? Okay." It's in the fax. We call the ambulance, we take them up to the hospital, and everything's good. So, it's really a home run. Because so much of our work is that kind of work.
Right.
And if you don't do it the right way, these people are repeat, repeat, repeat. I think, Jesse, you have emailed us on some people that you've talked about, how impressive it was.
Oh, yeah, yeah. People on the mental health appeal and other departments.
Yeah. So, we like what we're doing. A lot of the other departments around us are adopting it. And of course, we did it, we ran it. And because of our success, we're gonna keep increasing the training.
I want to thank you, Chief, and all your staff, officers, because it's not very easy up there. I've talked with many business owners. Every time I'm down in here, I have great concerns of what's occurring on the streets, and they are very happy. I talked with a couple of them last week in regards to where they talked to one of their new captains and stuff, where they feel now there's some better communication going on. So, I want to thank you and your staff.
I feel like I'm...
I apologize to anyone listening to this on NCTV. It almost sounds, I mean, it's almost comical, and I'm sorry, this is... Your tax dollars at work, and I think they knock off soon.
I think a lot of contractors are finding rain, so I...
Okay.
I'm gonna raise some over on site.
That's true. That's true. There's very nice space in Center Street, but I guess. Keep that in mind. Actually, traditionally, these are held in council chambers, but there's a complex of the states. Other questions of the chief?
Well, just one, not so much budget-related, but there's still, is there still an outstanding building problem? And we haven't totally signed off on all the systems that we have.
We haven't accepted ownership. We have a meeting tomorrow at 10:00. About, the entire team came did inspections. This is primarily water leaks for the garage. There's questions about the waterproofing, whether it was appropriate or put into the monitoring. We have, say, Sir Seawall, the architect, the project manager, me, Unistrust, and a couple of the other contractors coming together after they did the inspection a month ago, and they're gonna propose the plan to fix it. So, I'm sitting on, I think it's a $176,000 check since last year.
It's Unistrust? Unistrust was the contractor for the garage?
Yeah.
That's the pit field, right?
Yeah, Unistrust, and then Armani did the waterproofing, and then there was another group. So, it's, we're done pointing fingers at each other. We've actually discovered where the problems are, and they need to be addressed. So, and that's where we're open to end up tomorrow. But they're not, I'm not closing out the account until they fix it, because the next step will likely be, "Sorry, but we're gonna use your money to fix it by hiring." So, we hope, we hope to have some progress on it.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes. I know, once the police station was finished, I know when we went through our tour, we had seen a room that was not completed, which was for shooting and so forth. And Captain Concus at that point had stated, I think he was with us, what it would cost. So, where do you do this?
Where do we do the shooting now?
If you don't have a place.
Oh, we pay a fee to the Northampton Roberts, huh? We on the weekends, when there's no school in session, because they have an arrangement that no outside shooting, there's school days. So, all our rifles, patrol rifles, simulations, et cetera, shotguns, contact cover drills that we do, which is pulling up in a car and working with other officers. It's all this stuff. And also, increased requirements of training by the Criminal Justice Training Council. We now have to certify three times a year. So, we can do the outside stuff, the big stuff. It's an eight-hour training for officers. And because we're going through this new recertification, there's a course that we do in their range, and they charge us $650 an afternoon. And we can only put eight to 10 people through that course. So, we're going through that right now to get the third phase of the training council requirements, the shoot-down-shoot scenarios, and low-life firing and all that stuff. So, yeah, the range is expensive, but the state's mandating more and more of this firearms training for liability reasons. It's much more complicated, and it's good. You know, the more we can do, the better it is for the officers, because they're comfortable with everything. But no, it's still a dream on the horizon, and it's filling up with stuff that I can't believe how much...
What would you say would be the total cost of completing that?
Well, what we would like is the, it's not the top-of-the-line version, but it's about $325,000. We mitigated the $100,000 by knowing that we didn't, weren't gonna overspend the budget, so I had $280,000 in contingency fees. So, we took $100 out of that and did the air handling unit for the roof. That's there. The ductwork's there. Everything's there, ready to go. All we need is the bullet recovery system, the targets, and light, and we'd be good to go. And bullet recovery's very expensive, because it's ashes materially, you know, lead, and all kinds of other issues. So, I mean, we started a gift account. Everybody, Archer? We were signing to raise money, and I think we got $30. It was a start, but it didn't get us very much.
Counselor Sierra, Counselor O'Donnell, and then Counselor Carney.
Would you be able to do all of that training in that room if it was complete? It sounds like some of the training you were describing was maybe done outside, using vehicles and stuff?
Only because of rifles. The indoor range at the water club doesn't handle the air protection.
So...
Sidearms.
Sidearms. Well, not even a shotgun, so shotguns are not, their recovery system isn't set up for it.
But that, the room in the department would be set up to handle everything?
Anything and everything. Everything that we carry, every phase of the training that we do. We even looked at, well, we do another training for the Blue Line, which is a bulletproof tractor trailer that comes in. We put it at the DPW, and we ran everybody through the two-hour training with that, and it's all video-based scenarios. They call it shoot-down-shoot. You got it. Now, if I target, it's the guy with the gun, the badge, versus the bad guy with the gun, you know, guy with the horn, whatever. And that's live ammunition in this trailer. And that runs us $60,000 a day, and takes us four days to ride everybody through. So, it's stuff that has to be done. It does build up in cost over time. We had thought, at one time, I had a discussion with Smith College, when they were thinking of arming their officers, that I would leverage some money from them as a gift to the city, perceive money to start it, you know, kind of bring it, help us out. And we could buy the instructors a train on our personnel, or lease it out, though. The other commanders don't have that range either. Everybody shoots outside.
And what happened with the Texas Smith?
They decided not to, their staff converted to, to fight for public safety.
Counselor O'Donnell?
I just had very quick questions. First, I'm seeing this, so the District Attorney's Anti-Crime Task Force, that sounds interesting. I was just wondering, is this the first year we've participated in the program, or just the first year we're donating or dedicating a full-time equivalent?
Well, it's, we had a regional task force. It was managed by Greenfield PD, and we ended up having, they ended up having some county problems. So, we kind of disbanded it, walked away. We didn't want to be linked with that. So, the new DA wanted to get this going again, and he got a, I forget what it's called, some special community something grant. It's like only $80,000 to start it. So, while we're getting up to $5,000 in overtime, I'm actually contributing somebody else's full-time to that program. And they work regionally, because, you know, the drugs in Ashfield, and Covington, and Amherst, and Pollooke, you know, they all find their way to Northampton eventually.
But the first year, though, we were dedicating one FTE to that program.
Right. And it's an FTE based on their needs and calling. If we need him for work, he's with us first.
And ultimately, I assume it saves a lot of money participating in that, in terms of what it prevents?
We've had, they've had great success working this way. And it's a full-time equivalent, it's not just like a body that works with them full-time. We, they use our video forensic guys a lot to recover data from cell phones, laptops and whatnot. When they do an arrest, they seize the people, we're able to recover that. So, the 40 hours a week adds up, but it's not just one body full-time.
Counselor Carney?
Yeah, just a quick question. So, I know that the School Resource Officer position is eliminated. Is there, and you stayed here due to staffing shortages. So, is there, will that position be reestablished, or do you see that?
I'm hoping. I mean, by the end of this calendar year, if everything works out, you know, we'll do seven.
So, your plan is to still have that?
People are there. My first priority is to, you know, because it's two and a half people per shift, my first priority is to replace the vacant detective sergeant's position, because it's sorely needed, and there are probably another detective, and then I'll look at the SRO.
And then, so, then there's the reference to the Explorer post. So, is that, I know this is established in 2012, but isn't there a long history? I mean, I thought I saw a reference that Captain Clayton actually came to the police department.
She did. Joe Concus started it.
Oh, okay.
In 19W8. We started together. And it had a life, and then it just faded away. We ended up, you know, it was more of a recruiting tool, just trying to get people interested, local people, et cetera. So, the School Resource Officer took that on, and he's since walked away from the program, and it's been turned over to Sergeant Barge, I believe, who has an interest in it. So, we're transitioning that program to, we're transitioning that program to another person.
Oh, okay. Okay. Great.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes. Crossing limits. I'm bringing that up again.
I built in the budget the Ryan Road one.
And looking at it at $53,196, and talking with you, you're hoping sometime that that would go into the school department? And you would do the full training, helping them out and so forth like that? Have you ever talked with the mayor about that?
Mm-hmm.
And...
Well, we agreed, we agreed to do the Ryan Road one, and I absorbed it, and I was able to absorb it in my budget. This budget reflects the addition of that. Around the $10,000, $5300 of these. Our problem is finding people to do it. And we always have vacancies, and we have to pick and choose the lower priority, and you know, move the crossing area to the higher priority, or if we have an officer recovering, we'll try to cover it.
But I'm talking about taking it out of your budget, because you would like to see it taken out of your budget and put in the school budget.
Yes.
You're taking it out of the budget.
I mean, but right now, it lives in my budget. You know, personally, if you're scheduling school buses and school days and everything, it seems like something that could be managed by the school. They might have better luck with it. You know, we do postings in the Council of Aging, Patty Shaughnessy, checking with people. I actually looked into the tax relief program, where somebody can volunteer and get some tax relief, because another, but they only do it in quarters. They wouldn't make enough money in that quarter, you know, working the hour in the morning and the hour in the afternoon. I mean, it just, I was like, woo, woo, yeah. I mean, it just, I was like, woo, woo, yeah. But it wouldn't work out the way it's set up. Whether the, talking to Patty, it changes later that he can do a cumulative over a 12-month period of time. Maybe some would meet the threshold and be able to fill the positions, but that's, it doesn't like it's happening right now.
Because I know you have concerns when I talk with you last year in regards of, you wouldn't mind if that cross guarding position would come out of your budget and go in the school department.
Yeah, it's not so much where it lives, it's just in my belief, it seems like it'd be more appropriate to manage and schedule there. So if it takes, you know, it's a desk house, you're the 11 to 7 desk house. Crossing guard calls in at 5:00, saying, I'm not coming. He's got to go through the very short list of people and then it's like, tell the supervisor, supervisor's got to either hold somebody over on overtime to cover the poster. It's a little priority and we're busy, we can't cover it, we can't cover it.
Okay, just to check it out.
Any other questions? Chief, thank you very much for your presentation today. We appreciate your time.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
I'd be required to attend.
Counsel, that's a reasonable question. Counselors, have any desire to have the chief be present tomorrow for those two financial items?
No.
Finance items?
Great.
You're excused then from, it's gonna be a poor curve of a meeting. I don't know why you'd want to pass it up, but suit yourself.
I just got home from Palatton, Georgia. My sister's going back to Florida.
Oh, you got your priorities.
It's a one night a half beat, so that's my.
Okay. Okay, that would be fine. Next up.
Thank you all.
Smith Vocational's here and I'm gonna get you guys some chairs.
I just wanted, you know, Counsel Adams asked about those two days of payroll. In the budget book, you'll only see that two days in the fire department budget and the police department budget. All the others incorporated it into each individual line item. So, but I, when you asked that, I realized there's only two budgets that actually call it out as two extra days of payroll. But everybody else actually did budget for 26.1.
Thank you. Come on up, Smith Vocational's next. We're pretty casual today.
That's okay.
I'm apologizing in advance. We have, they're steam cleaning, routing, routing, pile driving. They're doing, on this side of the building, so you can hear that noise sometimes. We turned off the air conditioner so people could hear. This is Smith Vocational Superintendent Peterson and the Chair of the Board of Trustees, Mike Cantlin's here as well. Thank you very much for taking the time to come to see us. And I apologize, we had to turn off the air conditioner so people could hear as well.
Still cool with them.
Okay. All right. And if you just want to, just give a brief narrative and description about how your budget's shaking up.
Yeah. First of all, thank you so much for the board's support and also the support of the city. I'm very happy with the increased communication on my part with the mayor and I think we're working hard to really get a lot done. And he's been fantastic and I just want to thank him publicly, again, as well as the support of the board. So as far as what we're doing this year, what I brought is our Schedule 19 and you may or may not be aware that the money that the city contributes to our budget, these are indirect costs. So we don't necessarily get a check for the money, but these are very important to pay for our health insurance, things of that nature.
Is this the number? The Schedule 19?
Yeah.
$159.
Thanks.
Yeah. So I believe you'll see, it's right at the middle of the page, I highlighted my copy, but it says Smith FYI, excuse me, FY 2015 Cost Factors and right in the middle it says Smith School. And right at the bottom, you're going to see the number that I believe the mayor budgeted for us this year. And again, I'm.
Still looking for the sheet you're looking at.
Okay.
I just want to be looking at the same thing.
Yep.
That's just the beginning of the whole school, sir. Hold on. What's it say on the top of the page? Maybe that might help us. It says Schedule 19 Cost Factors. So hold on, what's that?
So I have my budget anyway, so I can.
See if we have what you're looking at.
You have the complete Smithville budget in their budget book, so you gave down whatever you put. So it's not the budget, I'm not sure.
Okay, just looking at some of the.
Okay, just, yep.
$166, Counsel. Pardon?
$166.
Oh, great. Yes, okay, it's just, there's something different written on top.
I think it's a little bit different.
Okay. I apologize.
Oh, no, that's okay. But so you asked us to look at a particular column, does it help?
I'm just letting you know that that's where it is.
Where?
It's in the middle column and again, I think.
What's the name of the middle column?
It says Smith School 20%.
Smith School 20%. It's just hard to, it's hard to look at if you're talking about something that you're looking at and whether it's hard when you say middle of the column or we don't have the same thing, it's just hard to.
Okay.
So either that, either that or we should just look at. Why don't you look at what we're looking at?
I can make a copy of that.
Oh, that may help.
Copy is right in the home.
Also Jeff is, if you want, this is the narrative for you guys on the, on your budget.
We're gonna pay $166.
So I can move on if you don't.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So again, that money is indirect cost. We don't actually see that money, so it's not money that we spend on programs. But some of the new programs that we're starting next year, we're starting a criminal justice program, which is very exciting. And we're starting a, an interior design and furniture making program, which we're also excited about. These are things that we work with the Regional Employment Board and we talk to them about job opportunities and we think it's exciting. These are certainly criminal justice, there's nothing like that in the area, so we're going to be unique with that. And the cabinet making and furniture making, there's only three throughout the state. So we're doing things that are new and different, so that's exciting for us. We're getting a lot of positive feedback from it and we're looking forward to those programs. Thank you. These are the first new programs that we've had at Smithville in years. So it's, I'm so excited. We're expanding, we're trying to get bigger, we're trying to get better. We're bringing night school courses, we're working with GCC and Greenfield Community College and the University of Massachusetts. And we're looking at bringing some night school courses. This has been, the Regional Employment Board has identified that there's a need for not just high school students to work in the labor trade, certainly manufacturing, but for young adults as well, career changers. There's a shortage in that field and we're hoping to open up our shops, I like to say 24/7. That's not realistic, but we want to open it into the nighttime so other members of the community can get in there. All right. We're also, which is very exciting, we just made a deal with Greenfield and with UMass to offer college credits right on our campus. And a student that enrolls in our school as a sophomore, they're going to be able to graduate with almost a year of college credits under their belt, free of charge. And we're very excited about that. We're also opening this up to other folks from the community. So if you go to the University of Massachusetts and you live in Southampton, you can come, you can take those courses right there on our campus. So a lot of great things going on. The folks at those two schools have been very supportive of what we're trying to do. So we're very happy that's happening. We just received, a lot of the things that we do is through grants, certainly the equipment grants. And I think most of you saw that Governor Patrick just approved $1.3 million for equipment grants and of that, we received $40,000. So every time we get these grants, and you know, we got two this year, we got two last year. Every time we get these grants, we update our machinery because unfortunately, a lot of the stuff that we have is pretty long in the tooth. So we're using that constantly to update our equipment to make sure that the kids have state-of-the-art equipment to work on. So when they go into the field, they're going to be well-prepared. So that's a big funding source for us, the grants. And right now vocational education, as you probably know, it's very, very hot, not only here in Massachusetts, but nationwide. You know, our enrollment is up this year for next year. We have a record number of North Hampton kids that are applying to go to the school, which I think is a great thing. We have almost 60, 60 kids applying for admission as a freshman next year. And I think that the word is getting out that we really have a quality education to offer. And not only can you come and get a trade and hit the job for us, you can also go to college. And we have kids that are going to college and you really can get it, to get both of those right at our school. And we're trying to get that word out and I think we've been okay with that. We've been successful with that. Again, things are very happy. I am very happy with the way things are going this year. It's been a great year. I've enjoyed working with the mayor and of course, the chair and the entire Board of Trustees on how we can really bring the school forward. And I appreciate your support. That's all I have. If you have any questions.
There's, Counsel Connaught and Counsel LeBaron.
You may not be the only one, but first of all, I'm really excited about your collaborations once again with Greenfield and UMass because as we all know, it used to be a great program with so many posts, it used to be a whole post-grad program at Smithville previously where people could get, you know, some of the requirements towards any of the licensable trades or things like that. So that's, that's really good. And in terms of the articulation that you have now, I guess that's with, with Greenfield?
Yes.
So that's, I think you just said people could get up to a year.
Up to a year.
So that's, so basically by virtue of their related coursework, would they get or is it kind of advantage?
Right, it's a very good question. So we're offering, starting next year, a seventh period, we're calling it. We have six periods a day, so we're offering a seventh period. And these are actually courses that, that UMass and GCC have identified as courses that they have high enrollment for, yet they don't have the space. So in the, in the fall, we're having Spanish, which is something we haven't had before, foreign language. So, so a child, yeah, a child will be able to take Spanish, receive high school credit and also receive four college credits. All right. So it's not, they don't get it through their related courses, these are above and beyond what they're doing. All right. So we're going to have Spanish next year, we're going to have an engineering course and we're going to have a botany course, which is, we do a lot of work with, with the animal science, but we don't do a lot with the plant science. And that's something that's going to help, help the portfolio of our kids when they get out. And again, we work with the school of stock, Virginia UMass, and Greenfield is really hot on agricultural education right now. And they're really trying to grow their program and they're trying to tap into what we're doing so we can really help them with their programs and hopefully get our kids into college, saving a lot of money.
So a couple of things. I know that you reported that really, really high results in MCAS.
Yeah.
So in addition to the MCAS though, if people don't realize this, so the Smithville students have not only all the MCAS requirements, but their Certificate of Occupational Proficiency.
Right.
So are you finding that, you know, you have as successful completion in that regard in terms of that certificate or?
To my knowledge, 100% of our kids are graduating proficient in their trades. What happens is by the time they enter their shop as a freshman, they're tracked and they have a book, a check, a checkbook. And if you're an auto mechanic, they would say, is able to read the timing light, is able to use a wrench to change a tire. And we check all those off, all right, and that becomes a part of their portfolio. So yeah, it's a process over the three and a half years that they're in their shop. And when they graduate, they're proficient in that because they've done those competencies. We show these to the people that are in the industry and they say, I'll hire this kid right now because they're coming there with this, with this dossier that other people in the industry just don't have. So the kids that are coming through our schools are just so, they're so much ahead of other folks that aren't. I have people calling me, I had somebody call me two weeks ago from Greenfield saying that they need 30 kids in their manufacturing shop tomorrow. We don't have, we don't have, we don't have that many kids. The next week I had somebody say, from Westfield say that they could use 20. So that's 50 kids and, and we don't have 50 kids in the program, certainly not that are old enough to go out as juniors and seniors. So our kids are getting placed, they're getting jobs, they're getting well-paying jobs and the employers are very happy.
And this would be my last question then. So I know there's often been a lot of talk about wanting to have more participation, collaboration between the school systems. So for example, making more opportunities for North Hampton High students, for example, to get some, and without watering down, without assuming that you can just go for a month and get, you know, a course and.
Right.
Or learn how to be an auto mechanic.
Right.
That the school actually, you know, you really do need to study for three and a half years solidly to have those credentials. What kind of, kind of in-between area have you explored for even life skills or basic, I don't know, so basics, how to change a tire even, for, you know, for opportunities for there to be more collaboration among the, the two schools?
And many of the surroundings ask the same question. We would love to send the kids to Smith, but we'd like to send them there for two periods a day. And we've talked about that, about ways to do that, but we just don't know how that would fit into the Chapter 74 curriculum because there's frameworks that we have to follow. And if we don't follow those frameworks, then, then we're not compliant to Chapter 74.
Just touching on, one of the things that we're looking at that is, I know it's hard to believe that I went there a few years ago, but the thing is they had night courses and they're coming back. And we're looking at that to identify not only a service to the, to the public, but people want to know how to change a tire. And, and they would come to a night class to learn that. And it would be a skill set that they'd be able to have to help them or, you know, either as a spouse or children. And so we're investigating that. And some of the curriculum that we had been able to provide years ago at night, we're re-identifying. And Maggie Gifford at the school is working with, to see what it would cost to run a night program, to see who's available for instruction and what we would charge for that course. So that is in process as we speak, so I think that helps with the question.
Counsel LeBaron.
Yes. You mentioned about how your enrollment is up.
Okay.
Okay, I would like to talk about the enrollment.
Sure.
Versus, how many students are from the outside? What's the number?
Yep, we have, right now, we have 89 students from North Hampton and.
That's total in the school?
Total in the school, yep, and.
And outside?
320, 322, I believe.
And you're saying that next year, we're going up another 60 from North Hampton possibly?
This current year's freshman class, we have the highest number of North Hampton kids of any of the, of the three grades, okay? When I came here, I told the board that I wanted to get more North Hampton kids in here and I've had the conversation with the mayor. I think that's important for us to serve North Hampton. And for whatever reason, in the past, I think that's gone down. Those numbers have been low, but, but we want more North Hampton kids. This is our community, we should.
Where are they going?
Well, they go to the high school. They go to North Hampton High School.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. If they don't come to our school, they go to the high school. As far as I know, I think, I don't know much about the charter school conversation, but I think that's in play. But, you know, we had last year about 45 applicants for this year's freshman class and about 30, I want to say about 30 of those kids chose to come. And this year we have about 60. So we're up to about 25% in our interest from, from the North Hampton kids, which I'm very happy about. And I'd like to see that number continue to grow.
Also too, I've had some people questioning about way back, Michael, which you remember, they had the LPM nursing class there. And I do know with the Literacy Project, we have brought that up about Greenfield Community College looking at bringing that nursing back. Are, is there any feedback about this?
Yeah, it, we talked about that program and that we did once have that. And I think the program you're talking about was a post-grad program. Am I correct? Am I correct? Okay.[1744.91] So we had a post-grad program, or we had post-grad students that would come during the school day.
Yeah.
McCann Tech does that right now, and they have a great program, so they would come during the school day and they would learn alongside of our kids, and I would love, love to see that happen. I'm sure Mike would tell you this more so than anybody, but I need to, I need to slow myself down because I want to do all these things, and it's just not possible right now. So, yes, that's something that I want to do, I want to add more programs, even LPM programs, certainly something I want to do, dental hygienist, operating room assistant, as far as that area goes, we're right next door to the hospital, and those are things that I want to do, but I just can't do it all at once.
Right, you could bridge a bridge between the hospital and this.
Right, we are working with the hospital in that regard, our health tech students get used by other nursing homes as well as the Cooley Dixon, any medical opportunity that we have, they're calling us like, they're calling for mechanics and machinists, and, but my sister Maureen went to that LPM program, so I knew, I knew it well, and, and the thing is that we are identifying needs, and through working with the employment people, they want more EMTs, they want medical people in that regard, so we're trying to identify right now and put together a list for the future, and the future becomes today because the demand factor is there. And, and as Jeff says, you know, we're excited about a lot of new things coming, we have to just prioritize and then make sure that we have the, the students to fill those classes if we're gonna offer them, as well as having the money and financial wherewithal.
Right, because I think with the healthcare, that is really a big problem out there today, I think that that would be the greatest thing for Smith Vocational to get back and open up those doors because many people are asking, is the nursing program ever gonna come back?
Yeah, well, our health tech people, I was in a meeting the other day while we're at our awards ceremony at Park for the seniors, and, and every, it wasn't just ladies, it was a gentleman that was in the health tech class, they've all been hired, and they're, they have different degrees already for being able to draw blood and do different things, so when they go in, it's, it's entry level, but at the same time, they have a lot of information that they can hit the ground running to be able to provide services today, so we're excited about that. And, and the unique thing about being on board is that students will come to me after they graduate, and when they're at school, just like the rest of us, you know, we kind of looked at the teacher and knew that we had homework and, you know, how you doing today, and you kind of get the shrug, but these kids are so excited afterwards. When they graduate, they come to me and said, I get the best education, so that's our, you know, our real feedback in regards to the people that are getting hired, and we always say that if you want to see our Smith alumni, look in the yellow pages, so that's where they're hired, you know, they either have their own business, they've gone to work for somebody, but they have a career level that they can attain.
And that program has been growing, and I had to hire another teacher this year because the American Medical Association only allows 10 students per one certified instructor, and I had to say no to kids, and that's something that we don't want to do, so we expanded the size of the classroom, we allowed more kids in, and we hired another teacher in there, so that's a huge need for us right now.
Councilor Adams and Councilor LeBart.
Criminal justice program, that sounds very interesting, it sounds it could be a realtor office students. Is there anything else, any more description you could give about that?
Nine years ago, Braden New Bedford began a pilot criminal justice program, okay, and just this past year, it received Chapter 74 approval from the state as, as an approved shop, and it was new to me last year, and I spoke to the instructor at a conference, and she said that it's a, it was a great compliment to the programs that they have, okay, and I started thinking about it, and I started talking to the team, and since I've been there, which is a short time, I, I talked to the kids and say, hey, what are you doing when you get out of here? They say, I'm gonna be a police officer, you know, I want to work for the FBI, I want to work for the CIA, so I'm saying, we have all these kids that want to do this, yet we don't have a training ground for them to do that. So to me, it seemed like a good fit for us, for us to go in that direction. The way we're gonna do it is we're gonna start with only freshmen next year, we're gonna grow with it, we're gonna add a sophomore the next year, and so on, so it's not gonna be a full scale, we're gonna allow everybody in, it's gonna, it's gonna start as, as freshmen, we're gonna write the curriculum, we're gonna write lesson plans, and, and it's gonna grow, and we hope that this is gonna be one of our strongest shops. I will say that, right now, the applications that we're getting, we ask the, the potential eighth graders to rank what they want to do, and criminal justice is our top choice, and we've never offered it, we've never offered it before, it's our top choice, so we're excited about it, okay?
Councilor LeBart.
I just, I'd like to say, first of all, I'm always really impressed by the range of things that you offer and hope to offer, and I'm always, I always consider a huge asset for this, for this community. I was just curious about one item I wanted to ask you about, which was athletics.
Right.
It seems like you're, you're undergoing a substantial increase in how much you spend on it, and you're gonna spend roughly twice what you spent last year, and compared, two years ago, it's like nine times as much, so it's like a big increase in athletics, so my question is, given, you know, your, your mission, putting people in the yellow pages, I'm just wondering what your philosophy is in terms of athletics, what value that brings?
My philosophy on that is, I want kids that come to our school to have the same opportunities at Smith that they have at every other school, and when I first got there, there was, there was five sports, and I felt that area was lacking, and I also felt that if the kids had more opportunities, then we would get more kids to enroll in our school, alright? So far, I've, I've seen that, last year, after only adding two sports, our enrollment had, was up about 20%, and that was just for incoming freshmen over the year before, alright? And from what we're seeing now, it looks to me like our enrollment is gonna be up at least that this year, and our recruiter that goes out and does the interviews for these kids, they say that they want to come and they want to play sports, and that's a big draw for them. So, for us, for, for our school, everything is about recruiting and getting kids in the doors because we don't have a, a set budget, which is good and it's bad, but we don't have money that's guaranteed to us, and without getting kids in the doors, we can't operate. So whatever I can do to give the kids opportunities to get them in the doors, that's my mission, that's my goal. Thank you.
Councilor LeBart.
Yes, you're talking about your goal of going out and recruiting, it wasn't hard to come to the paper, I haven't seen it, somebody had told me today when I was just sitting at the bench out there, and what's that all about?
I think there was an misunderstanding between one of our young coaches who had...
You get that under being looked at, and, and I don't want to reveal information in regards to, I don't mind that the articles in there, we're working to, to work with the town of Amherst that, that had the problem, that put the article in the paper, but we have not had direct conversation, so I want to identify what they're saying is a problem because I don't know if it's a problem.
Okay, so this is something new that's...
It's something new, it came out of the morning paper, I was not aware of it before all this, I'd like to take time to evaluate it and then to respond to it because I think that, that their athletic department, the, the trustees, and the principal and superintendent need to have a conversation about it before we talk about it in public.
Okay.
If you would, bear with me.
That's fine. Like I said, it's brand new to me, Michael.
Yeah, me too.
The, are there other questions? The, your tuition has increased from sending communities about 14%? Is that right?
It, it went last year from 16.8 to 18.2, so if that's, if that's what the percentage was at.
Right, yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah, we were surprised, I know that we voted, and I agreed with the mayor, that we need to, traditionally, Smith has charged less than, than the state recommended tuition rate.
For Northampton?
For, for outside districts.
For outside, yeah, for outside districts, yeah, and so the board voted before the actual number came out to, to charge the full rate this year, okay, and I, I was expecting the state rate to be about 17.2, and when it came out as 18.2, we were, I think pleasantly surprised, but also at the same time, I think that that, that hurt a lot of our sending districts, and that's kind of a PR thing I've been working on too.
Right, yeah, the, leads into my next question, is that impact on your enrollment and your recruiting?
You know, it could, it could hurt us, I don't know how that's gonna play out until next year.
Right.
But it's a lot of money, it's a lot of money to send a, to send a kid here, and that's why we really need to be great at what we do, or else they're not gonna send them here, you know, the state sets the rate for every vocational school in the state, we're about the middle of the road, and in some places, it's 22, $23,000, it costs about $19,000, our, our PPE is about $19,000, which is a little bit above what we're getting in tuition, and we get about, we get about, I want to say roughly $17,000 when you break it down per kid from Northampton, so it, it, yeah, it's a lot of money, and we hope that it doesn't.
And because the state rate's usually set by proximity to Boston, of course, and this part of the state, your sending district, know greater poverty, and they have, they have greater challenges consequently.
For sure.
And you're, clearly, obviously, you guys are sensitive to that, and you're going to try and figure out where's the tipping point, and how it ever, once the point comes, when it adversely impacts your enrollment?
Right.
And also your ability to function.
I could touch on that, the, because of the competitive nature today of schools in regards to working with, if, if they're offering the same programs, then we gotta get competitive.
Right.
But what I see as a former business owner and being on the board, is you gotta sell value, not price, so do, I want to apologize for, for what it costs to go to that school? No, but I want to make darn sure that the value of what that student's gonna get out of it, and the sending district has to realize that, because when you're, you know, voting on a budget and how many students you're gonna send to Smith School, and it's based on a dollar value, then all of a sudden, the value gets washed out of the career path that that student's gonna get in their future, and if they're restricted because of monetary situations, they're, they're the ones that's gonna take the hit out of it.
So your challenge is spreading the gospel?
Yeah, we're out there ringing the bell, matter of fact, we go to Rabbit Box for the Chamber of Commerce, we deal with many chambers of commerce, we get out into communities and sell Smith School, we ran Lock Haven recently, so things were never done before that they were just accepted, that the kids are gonna come to school, not today, it's very competitive.
This is a follow-up to that, so every district has to provide vocational education opportunity for any student that, that wants it, but they could choose, East Hampton, for example, could choose to send kids to Holyoke instead of Northampton?
Sure.
If, if, if the cost were that much, that much of a difference, but as you're saying, I mean, it is a good point that if they look at the difference between 17,000 and 18,000, but the value is, is really that much better, they, it is then the decision of that district though, not pupil by pupil, but overall, as to which direction they'll send students, is that correct?
Uh, East Hampton...
So they've always come to SmithVoc?
They have, and...
I thought we're going to Westfield for a while now.
Oh, Western?
They're going, they're going to the lower part of the...
Oh, okay.
What, what they have down there is a half-day program, and it's, it's half the price of what we're offering, so they have elected to, to go that route, and this is, this is something that...
How long ago was that?
Going back to value, is they, they, it's a half a day class, and they spend the other half day on buses coming and going, so they've actually lost four hours of school that, that they could have been getting an education in their own school bus, so that's part of the value picture to show to different school systems, where, you know, how much student value of education are they really getting?
So are there no East Hampton students at Smith?
We do, in 2006, we had about 135.
So those that choose a program that's not offered at higher value?
Exactly, exactly, so if you want to go to plumbing, which they don't offer, they're allowed to come here, so...
And they do their, they try and have them do their academics in East Hampton, and then they just do their shops there, right?
Correct, they jump on a bus.
And then you add the transportation on top of all of it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Gentlemen, I appreciate you, thank you for taking the time to come present to us. Dave Pomeranzis just stepped out here, he's up next, from Central Services.
Is he up on the lift row?
I noticed the noise stopped when his scheduled time showed up, but we can ask you for that.
He's got the power, isn't he?
David, you're up. Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks.
Next up, we have Central Services, David Pomeranzis here, and thank you, first of all, for coming, and, and actually, we're pretty close to schedule so far, we, just to give everyone a heads up, at 7 o'clock, the Youth Commission's like a recruiting meeting in this room.
With pizza?
With pizza, so you're all invited to stay, actually, and there will be food here.
I talk slow.
You're welcome to stick around. David, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, good afternoon, everybody, first of all, thanks for the opportunity to be here, Pam said I had to be here in the notice.
That's right, don't say no to Pam.
So, what I'd like to do is do an overview on the Central Services budget for fiscal 15, highlight some of the key areas, and also include in that some information on Parking Maintenance Division, which is now under Central Services, and then certainly entertain any, any questions from, from the group.
What page is it, did you know it's a conference?
Forty-six.
Oh, forty-six, forty-six, thank you.
Thank you. Page forty-six in your hymnals.
Okay, so, talk about the Central Services budget first, and run through some notes about both PS and the operations and maintenance side. No increases or decrease in personnel for fiscal 15, both on, in Central Services and the Parking Division, so we're still looking at about a staff of 55, covering both administrative management and custodial maintenance, as well as city electrician, HVAC, CTEC, and energy officer. You'll notice under PS and Central Services that there is a custodian weekend pool, a JFK position, we moved that from the NPS budget over to Central Services, since that really is a Central Services position, it's a 19 and a half hour position, gives us a little bit better control, so we moved that from NPS this year over to Central Services. I can give you percentages if you need them, but just to sort of refresh your, your memories about the fact that we have a number of positions in Central Services that are sort of multi-department funded, we have the mail courier, the HVAC, CTEC, the city electrician, the facilities project coordinator, that are all funded between SmithVoc, the City General Fund, and the DPW and NPS, and that's because basically the work that we do is, is spread that far across the board, and we use some sort of percentages based on how much time the staff is spending on, in those particular departments doing what we do on a daily basis. The other thing I'll note under PS is that Chris Mason, the energy officer, Chris works 35 hours a week, five hours of that time is funded by the Northampton Housing Authority, we have an MOU with the Housing Authority where Chris spends five hours a week providing technical services and assistance as far as developing and implementing energy conservation programs, and looking at developing renewables for NHA, NHA facilities. Program worked really well last year, and John Height was very energetic about refunding that this year, so Chris is again working with NHA, and we just finished the first year of a new uniform policy in conjunction with the DPW, we had some bumps in the road to, to get out of that program, but Sintas, the vendor, seems to have gotten things together. It's a good program, and I'm gonna be expanding it this year for some of the other staff, including the Parking Maintenance Staff, saves on their personal clothes and gives us a look of professionalism as well as security when, when they're in and out of the buildings and facilities.
What does that include, for uniforms, is it just the outer clothing?
It's, it's t-shirts, jeans, and a, either a jacket or a sweatshirt, all with the city logo.
And footwear?
They get a boot allowance as part of the union contract, so that's, that's separate, that's not part of the uniform policy, so they're, and everybody seems to have liked it as far as the first year goes, so we'll be continuing and expanding that. Couple of notes, as we start to move into the OM side, under utilities, we're looking at going out to bid this summer for electricity and natural gas contracts, we have contracts now that will expire sometime late fall for both electricity and natural gas, these are 18 to 24 month contracts, and based on trending, we're looking at probably small increases in costs for fiscal 15, probably do 18 to 24 month... contracts. We tie, we try to tie them into the budget cycle, makes things easier as far as projections. And what I, what I do want to note is that since two thousand and ten, when we implemented the first year of construction for the Energy Performance Contract with Con Ed Solutions until now, across all city facilities, both NPS and the city and Smithville, we've looked at decreases of about twenty-five to twenty-eight percent in both electricity and natural gas consumption. We can't regulate price, although we try to do that through our bidding, but we've certainly, and hats off to Chris Mason for his, his work with constantly developing new projects to drive down our usage, twenty-five to twenty-eight percent as a result of the Energy Performance Contract. And that's, that's, that's a great number. And just once, one note, oil used to be a major player in the city as far as heating is concerned, with the exception of a greenhouse in a small building at Smithville and a couple of small buildings at the wastewater treatment plant. Oil is no longer an energy source in the city of Northampton as far as municipal operations are concerned. We've basically converted everything to natural gas, so big, big gains in that area as well. Again, I mentioned we'll be looking at probably some small increases on the electricity solicitations, but again, it depends on what the market looks like later this summer when we go out for, for contracts. One note I'd like to make as far as just the general OM, repairs and maintenance, both maintenance on an ongoing basis and electricity and HVAC repairs for Central Services. We have between our licensed and certified maintenance and electricity and carpentry staff and HVAC, we are doing more and more in-house work now, doing our own construction and renovation projects. We're basically pulling permits in conjunction with the Building Department and what that's doing is allows us better control on the work that we're doing. We're not having to go out and bid for, using prevailing wages. And just to give you a sort of a broad brush of how many projects we've done this year on top of ongoing daily maintenance, Central Services staff this year renovated Human Resources Department, the Veterans Department, retirement offices, the assessors' offices, the old treasurer's offices, and they're in the middle of doing the parking collector offices right now. That's on top of their, their day-to-day operations, so.
What personnel do you use then?
This is our, this is our in-house staff.
So is it the
So you're talking maintenance supervisor?
And the maintenance?
And maintenance staff.
Okay. So the custodians that are listed here?
We'll, we'll pull the custodians in for moving when we're swapping offices back and forth, but you know, most, most of the maintenance staff all have their construction supervisors licenses. So we're doing more and more of that in-house. Susan?
I just wanted, before you move utilities, one of the big increases in your budget was the stormwater.
Yes, I was going to mention that. Thank you. You'll notice that that's both under Parking Maintenance and Central Services. That's a new line item this year based on the new program, the DPW program.
The money to to assess the city are run through here. So that's city money?
Yes. Yes. So just like we pay water and sewer bills and the money gets cycled through, we'll now be doing stormwater starting July one. Couple of notes about other both efficient and money-saving programs that we do at Central Services. Most of these have been in place for some time, however, one is a new one. They end up basically saving the city money. They allow us to run the programs very efficiently and gives us great pricing because we're centralizing all these operations. So briefly, we're looking at just finishing the first year of three on the new trash contract for the city. We work with alternative recycling systems. In fact, I met with them today to review the first year. They're doing both Smithville, NPS, and the city facilities as far as recycling, trash, and composting at three of the six schools. So we had some bugs to work out the first year with them, but again, very efficient program. Some of the other ones, you've heard me talk about these before. We have a centralized photocopying program, so we have fourteen photocopiers spread around the city. We have a five-year lease, first three years are free maintenance, so big savings there. And we're getting departments to do more and more of their printing through the copiers and which is going to allow us to move away from the individual desktop printers. Office supplies and custodial supplies, this is a long-term program we've done between the city and NPS where we go out for bulk bidding in the spring and the summer for both custodial and office supplies, lock in the prices, and then we order and distribute those materials and supplies over the course of the year. And again, as a result of big savings in our pricing and much smoother operation as far as securing those products. And then the last one, under centralized programs I'll just mention, we have a very in-depth, what we call contracted inspection services program. This provides us with everything from elevator inspections, sprinkler system inspections, fire extinguishers, generators for both NPS and the city facilities. And again, we go out the end of every May-June period for new contracts, so we're asking vendors for multi-building pricing as opposed to having every department go out and do it on their own. Results in some significant savings. That, that program as well as custodial supplies, we're looking probably at least a ten-year history on having done that, again, with marked savings. Couple of comments on the Parking Maintenance Division, which Central Services took over a year plus ago. Again, like Central Services, no increases or decreases in personnel. They have, it's a four-person staff. And under utilities for Parking Maintenance, we'll be looking at, again, probably small increases in electricity costs. This is covering the parking lots as well as the garages and, but we're going to be offsetting those price increases in supply by looking at savings through the LED lighting that we've been installing in the garage and some of the other lots. So we should pretty much be zeroing out as far as any increases. Under OM for Parking Maintenance, the tasks remain the same, but I just want you to note that the increase in the budget line for that category is going to change in two areas. One is the stormwater charges that I just mentioned under Central Services and the other is that we'll be going out for a new citywide telephone emergency notification system this year. The money comes through the Parking Division, however, it's the Emergency Dispatch Center at Fire that will be coordinating the bidding and implementation of that program. So twenty-eight thousand dollars you're looking at for that line, that's what that's going to be going for in fiscal fifteen. So we're sort of the conduit at Parking for that project. And then under non-Parking Maintenance, the last items dealing with, we have the bid assessment. That's, that's a steady funded line item. That thirty-five thousand dollars pretty much is the same every year. And then your equipment lines that you're looking at covers everything from the equipment that the maintenance guys use in the garage, vehicles, the parking machines that are in the lots. Used to cover and shortly it won't anymore, the infamous cards for the gate access system at the garage. We will be looking at the new system being installed for that in about ten weeks. So we have a vendor and we'll be moving on that, so that, that will be a big plus. That's basically a quick overview and
Okay, all right. I guess just one question. We'll work our way around the room then, Councilor Carney and then Councilor Donald.
I'm just curious, has the maintenance assistants in the Parking Division, I'll look back at here too. Yeah, and I never said, so, and those are probably, so the three maintenance assistants, or two are, two are non-represented the full-time and the maintenance assistants half-time is Asmi. What accounts for the difference? Why, why do we have non-represented?
He is part of his duty as a parking enforcement officer.
Oh, the two, the two that are non-represented or the one who is represented?
The one who is represented.
Oh, I see. So, so, but, so it's the parking enforcement officer piece that gives them representation?
Yes.
And so why are the other maintenance assistants not represented? I'm just curious.
They're not represented.
I understand that, but why?
They don't, they don't do any PEO work.
They don't do any parking enforcement? Yeah, I'm just curious.
It's just, you know, the, I guess when the Parking Division was created and these maintenance staff were hired, they were just hired as non-represented employees and over time they've just opted to stay as non-represented employees and they haven't been, I guess, invited into the union. I mean, NAME would probably be the most analogous, the union that they would probably be in. That's mostly DPW workers.
Not Asmi?
No, Asmi is clericals.
Oh, I see.
We have a, we have a Northampton Association of
Maintenance.
Municipal employees. Municipal employees. And that's generally what all the DPW folks are in. So, but yeah, but this is, it is one of those anomalies of the creation of the Parking Division a few years ago.
There's a number of them also, I just noticed too, in the, for Central Services that are in the, just the regulars.
Some are in NAME, some are in NAES because they're affiliated with the school, they're in the school custodial.
Not a big deal, just curious.
But we try, we do try to mirror some of the benefits that, you know, like the uniform allowance, for example, was negotiated under the NAME contract, but as Mr. Pomeranzis said, we're extending that to their employees as well, so, so that there's parity at least.
Councilor Donald, Councilor Murphy and Councilor LeBar.
I'm all set.
You're all set, Councilor Murphy?
So our commitment to the bid was a flat rate because I know they, they reduced their fee to everybody else, but our, so we, that wasn't a fee, it was a flat contribution because I noticed it hasn't really changed.
It's, in my time here, it's been thirty-five thousand annually.
It's in an MOU that was negotiated. So it's not And we're currently reviewing that MOU.
Memorandum of Understanding for those of you playing at home.
The way the bid law works is that if you're with nonprofits, they do MOUs with them. So that's part of the original MOU and we're in, we're actually going through that MOU right now and, and so that may be one of the items going forward that may be changed. We don't know, so.
Councilor Murphy, you're all set?
I'm all set.
Councilor LeBar.
Yes. David, I know I have talked with you on the phone in regards to difficulties, problems we're having in some of the schools about cameras on the outside of the buildings and I really feel that's a priority because of what is occurring lately with our schools and especially what has been occurring at Ryan Road School. When will all of our schools have outside cameras? Because I think this would eliminate problems of vandalism going on, being able to video and see who these people are that are causing the damage.
Well, I can tell you that
I mean, we've had, what, two weeks of a break right now and it's just not Ryan Road, but other schools too, and I'm just curious about talking with the principal to feeling that cameras should be placed on the outside and I agree with that.
Well, we've got capital projects slated for JFK for work this summer. That's ready and set to go. The high school's been taken care of with upgrades. Greg Kohan, the maintenance supervisor, has met with the principal at Ryan Road and they're working on looking at locations around the building for cameras there since, because of the incidents that have happened there. We're talking about Bridge Street as well. So as either capital requests are funded or we're looking at working with the Superintendent's Office on expanding overall security systems in each of the schools and using possibly some building fund money to implement projects like the cameras, like alarms on the doors where we don't have them now. So it's a work in progress, but I know that Greg has met with the principal at Ryan Road and they're actually sculpting out locations for cameras around the perimeter.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Pomeranzis?
David, I'd just like to say once again, you know, it's pretty galling. I know and I don't think a lot of people appreciate essentially the fact that you are integral to the warp and weave of the function, the regular function of the city and that you've done amazing transformations in your tenure here and have saved us significant monies. And yeah, I mean, you know, it's, it's frequently taken for granted and just want to say, we don't take it for granted, so.
Appreciate you. Thank you. And my staff thanks you.
Yeah, I mean, my only knock would be the steam cleaning going outside the window walk and it seemed to stop miraculously when you're, you were queued up for testimony. I don't know if that's a coincidence or, but we'll, we'll let that lie. So thank you again.
Councilor LeBar.
Oh, Councilor LeBar.
And I want to thank you again, David, which I have before, and to all of your staff. I think you're all doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Great, thanks. Thanks for your time. Well, let's see. Well, next up, Regina, you're up. It's, we're, this is Northampton's Public Schools. Regina Nash is here, the superintendent. Councilor Adams has to be excused and actually thank you, Councilor Adams, for the time you did put in. That was very impressive.
I go to leave at six-thirty.
And you have to leave at six-thirty. No one's sticking around for the pizza from the Youth Commission. All right? You make the choices. I understand. Regina, thank you for, first of all, for coming. Thank you for doing the Omen's work as an interim and being a meal in the fires of yet another school district with, and we appreciate your time here.
Well, thank you very much and I can't tell you how happy I am to be here to present this year's budget. I have to tell you that it's quite different from the one presented last year and most recent years, actually. First of all, we have no layoffs this year and in fact, we've been able to start restoring some of the cuts we had and adding some new positions, which are actually mandates from state, which I'll get into a little later. I also am very grateful that I'm working with the mayor. We've been able to basically bring the budget at three-point-four percent increase, which I think is unheard of in recent times in Northampton. And I really think you've turned a corner in Northampton with regard to public education and what we're able to do in our school system for our students. And at this point, I'd like to review the additions that we've added to the budget. I'd like to talk a little bit about state aid and also talk about school choice, which are usually hot topics at these sorts of points. So what I've done, I don't have your budget book, but I have my budget book and I put your page numbers online. So let's see if this helps. If you look at page one oh five and hopefully you'll see at the top the overview of the current budget.
That's it, yeah.
Okay, good. I did that right. No, I'm not a math major, but not a math major. What I'd like to talk about are the additions to the budget. And the first three that you see halfway down the page, you see two additional tiered support specialists at the elementary and then the additional one-point-oh FTE tiered support specialist from JFK. The legislature has a new law that goes into effect July first and it's chapter two-twenty-two, which is called the Discipline Law. And basically what it's telling us is that we're no able, no longer able to send students home for behavioral issues. You know, sometimes when you have little kids and they have a bad day, you can call mom or dad and let them go home for a little bit. We're no, no longer able to do that. And what we really need to have is some sort of staffing in our schools, which we're sort of calling a re-engagement center. It has to be by law, a person who's certified teacher, not the, just an ESP. And basically they are to offer programs and courses and classes to help students with their academics while they're in the re-engagement center. We're not quite sure how this is going to work, so at this point, we have only two that we're looking for at the elementary level. They will be shared between two of the elementary schools each, so they'll be there two and a half days a week. And they will be doing other things in terms of looking at developing, implementing, and staffing this re-engagement center. They'll be there to provide academic instruction in various areas and they're there to support the students who are having behavioral issues so that hopefully we can get them back into the right track and the right track and the improvement, so they will not need to remain in the engagement center and will not need to be eventually suspended and/or expelled. So, we're putting those in. We need to do it by law. I can't say that that's going to work exactly the way we want and indeed, a year from now, we may be looking at two more so that there is a full-time person in each school. We just can't predict that. We didn't want to go that route because we have so many other needs. At this point, we wanted to see how it would play out. With JFK, they have an ESP who's sort of fulfilling that role now. However, it has to be a certified teacher, so what we've done here in the second line is we've put the difference in between the salary of the ESP and a certified teacher. So, that's where you see the twenty-one thousand. So, that, that position will be upgraded and the ESP will, actually will be leaving. Of that person's choice, not ours, but we'll be able to hire a person. So, that's what we're looking for there. These, in my mind, come under that category famously called unfunded mandates, which none of us are happy about, but it's there. You also see a half-time position for a sped teacher at Ryan Road. We have a large number of students receiving services there and actually the class size is too large for what we have, so we need to add that other half-time back in. Same thing situation at speech and language teacher. It leaves, we're looking at a twenty percent, which is another day a week added to the speech and language teaching position that's already in place. The tech and video instruction is at the high school level. We now have a point six seven, so we're looking to add a point three three, or basically a third of a position. And we're looking to build upon the JFK experience in technology, which is quite successful in that school, and we just don't have enough to offer at the high school. So, the signups have now been completed. I don't know how it actually came out, but that, the possible offerings we were looking at was photography, introduction to computer science, A B, Microsoft, Office, Google Apps, digital literacy, ethics, those sorts of things. So, that's adding about a third of position for the high school in technology in that area. Ryan Road was actually, when I got here this year, did not have any additional staffing in terms of reading interventionists and that was really a hardship. So, we were able to fund through some grants a position there, part-time position, but we really need to put in a full-time position in at Ryan Road to help with the problems there. We have some additional supplies, software and licensing. These are things, for instance, at preschool level. We're looking to add tools of mind for all the preschool classes. We piled to that this year in terms of one of the kindergarten schools and deemed it very successful. We'd like to put it in preschool and then in future years, we want to add it to the other kindergartens as well. We also have a new student software program called Aspen and we need to add additional modules for student reporting systems. We have an increase in Comcast internet access, health office, web hosting, and software licensing for some of the things we already have, but there are yearly fees for the licenses. And we also had an interesting situation with our technology specialists at the elementary level. Currently, we have one between four schools. And you can imagine, that's a work very well. So, what we're looking to do is double that. We're looking to have two for next year so that they will each share two of the elementary schools. This is for direct instruction to students using computers or other devices and it's also to work with teachers. In my opinion, that need is you need one in each school. You can only do so much at one time. So, we really think that doubling that amount that we have now is going to be very helpful. And we're also looking at increasing the attendance in social worker. That position is currently shared with Smithville. We have more than enough need for that position and in fact, when we looked at this as a administrative team, all principals said that is our number one consideration because we have so many families and students in crisis that we really need that position full-time in our school district. So, that's an addition of forty percent. She's sixty percent for us now, forty percent for Smithville. She will hours full-time and she does a fantastic job. So, we'll have to add that. So, if you look at those additions, we come up with eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars with the addition of the level funded services. So, our level funded services were five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, the additions are three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So, our budget increase is eight hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for FY fifteen. Breaking that into percentages, it's two point two percent for the level services and then another one point two percent for the new items that I just talked about to make the three point four percent increase. Our total budget is thirty point six million and the local appropriations is twenty-six point three million. The rest of that coming out in grants and other resources. If you would like to turn the page over to one oh seven in your book, you can see that we've broken out two of our bigger fund sources, one being the school choice revolving account and what we're looking to do with that because that plays a big part in the budget. Basically, the school choice is about six percent of the budget. You can see where we started with the beginning balance. And by the way, what you do is very smart here. You spend the money received last year and the next, in your current year and your following year's budget. So, you always know how much you have when you start and that's very important. So, your beginning balance in July of this year of twenty thirteen was one point eight million. We're projecting this year, you're going to receive another one point three million and we're looking at expenses out of that, a one point two million and projected balance of one point nine and then what we're using this year in the budget, one point six. So, next June thirtieth of fifteen, we should have about three hundred and twenty-seven thousand left. And it's important that you have something left over because you don't know what your emergencies are going to be. You don't want to cut it too close and actually you can have by law up to five percent of your budget reserved. So, this is well within that. Circuit breaker, which we see, receive for special education cost. In fact, these funds can only be spent on special education cost. Usually, there are quite a few are spent with regard to out-of-district placements and teacher salaries. As you look through these cost figures, again, this is different in that we are spending in the same year that you're receiving the funds and at the end of next June fifteen, we should have about three hundred and twenty thousand. That's not a lot of money because some of our students, we lost as much as a hundred thousand dollars. So, if we get a new one in, it's unexpected and then we will fund through that sort of purpose. So, I think these are very reasonable figures to have. If you look at your page one oh eight, this gives you breakdown of your grants, your other funds that are used in your budget. And you can see your budgets across the top going from FY thirteen, fourteen, and then into fifteen, which is your projected budget. And you can see that our grants have increased over last year. We're getting about one point four million, which is tremendous help for the school district. The page is starting at one oh nine, is how we use those grants and the revolving funds. For instance, we have revolving funds for building usage. We have revolving funds for food services, et cetera. So, you can see how we use those funds. We use them across schools. We use them across districts and those are offsets to your budget. Page one eleven, your chapter seventy appropriation. And what I'd like to point out there, although it's not a lot different from other school districts, is that your school choi, your chapter seventy appropriations are not keeping up with the budget numbers. In other words, and if you look at FY oh five, your chapter seventy was thirty-two point four percent. And if you go all the way up now to FY fifteen, you can see that it's only twenty-six point nine one percent of your budget. I guess the good news is, as long as I've been in this area, which is now about thirteen years, we've been telling the legislature that they really need to look again at funding formula. A lot of things are not included in it. Every form is back in, I believe, nineteen ninety-two. For instance, in the funding formula, we do not have school nurses. We don't have all the technology that we require now, et cetera. So, the legislature, I believe, has agreed that they have now, will establish a committee to look at the funding formula. I think it's very important that you stay on top of that and that you really engage your local legislators in terms of looking at that and being proactive in the fact that we really need to get some more state funding for our budget. Towns and cities just can't, can't continue to do it the way they have to. And just sort of a fund chart on one thirteen, you'll see the FY fifteen budget funding sources and you will see that school choice is six percent of your funding source. You can see the other grants that are listed there, et cetera, and you can see your appropriations is eighty-six percent. That's a lot of them. I'd like to look a little bit at school choice, page one fifteen, and a question I answer every year, actually I answer at least four times every year, and that is that we do not hire additional teachers to take care of school choice youngsters. What I've always used the term is backfill. We have places within our classrooms where we could hold another one or two students and we receive money for that purpose. And that is a godsend to districts that are getting school choice youngsters in. When you're losing them, it's a different story. And I've always felt very fortunate. I've always been associated with the school district, but we've gotten them in. You do quite well with that. And first of all, the enrollment is on one fifteen and if you see, you're sort of leveling off with enrollment. A lot of the districts in western Mass are losing students, considerable numbers of students. If you look from about two thousand and eight down, you'll see that you're pretty much around that twenty-seven hundred student mark and that's a good thing. You're not increasing, but you're not losing. So, that's helpful. And if you look in terms of page one sixteen, you can see that where you have the incoming school choice pupils and the outgoing as well. So, for instance, an average over the ten-year period, you have brought in one million, two hundred and fifty-five thousand per year with school choice money. And you are losing, because of students who are going out, four hundred and fifteen thousand. So, the numbers are still in your favor. Why do kids choice out? Lots of reasons. There's lots of choices now. Sometimes it's as simple as a family working schedule. They work in another district. It's easier to transport their kid. They want their child next to you where you're working, et cetera. It can be that easy. It can be a matter of families moving. It can be a matter of the fact that there are a lot of choices in terms of charter. Some of them are very specialized and it can be a choice in terms of you have a lot of private schools in this area. So, those are some reasons, but the very factor that you're, you know, losing with kids going out, four hundred and fifteen thousand, but at least you're gaining one point two five five a billion a year. So, that's helpful and you're sort of maintaining that.
Counselor Murphy, you have a question?
Yeah, just I noticed there was a pretty decent, you know, couple hundred thousand dollar increase in the coming year for, for incoming tuition. Is there, we know we're expecting?
We're expecting, the school committee has approved, let me make sure I'm right on the number. I believe the number is seventy-nine openings, K through twelve, in our school system. And at this point, we have filled sixty-four of those. So, we still have some openings. And these are across all grade levels and they're across at the high school or middle school, all subject areas. So, even though it's seventy-nine students, we're looking to have come in on top of the choice we already have. It doesn't mean that they're all in one class, et cetera.
No, they're different. And where are they generally coming from?
They're coming from Holyoke and they're coming from East Hampton.
Still from East Hampton? Because East Hampton's made great strides in-
It has, with the new school.
-improving their high school. We're still getting there, still getting their kids.
There's the big ones and then there's lots of little ones that, you know.
And where do our kids go? Where do they tend to go to?
It's interesting because you lose a lot at the elementary level. I believe it was a hundred and, don't hold me to this, but I think we lose about a hundred and fifty-five students at the elementary level and most of them go to Smith Campus School. That's the number one loss. They come back for high school.
I know we do a lot of incoming for high school, but for a while, we had a lot that were leaving to skip middle school and then coming back. That, has that trend changed?
I can't tell you. I don't know.
It's changed. Because I know they've tried very hard to-
Yeah.
-combat that at the middle school.
But I do know they, they come back, certainly for the high school. And that's one of the concerns that, that I have and the administrative team has, that I think we really need more resources at the elementary level. And I think also, if we looked in terms of looking more deeply into before-school and after-school programs that might be associated with the school district, we might be able to keep some of those kids here at the elementary. But I think the reality is also the fact, it's hard to get over the cachet. My child is at Smith Campus School. Smith College is, it's a big draw. It's a big name. I think a lot of people like that.
Now, remind us as to following the money. Is that a private school? Do they in fact take tuition or do they just go?
It's a private school.
So, they don't take, they don't take sending tuition with them?
We lose it. We don't get it. So, for any student that goes there, we lose five thousand dollars approximately. If they need special services, we will lose even more money. So, we don't get the money because they're not our students.
But it's not equivalent to a charter school?
It's not equivalent to a charter.
Yeah, it is not.
Charters, they really are expensive.
Yes.
And of the, of the pupils leaving of the seventy, at least last year that left, how many were charter and how many were campus school or other private, you know?
I don't have that. I'm sorry. I can get you that information, but I don't have the topic yet. But I, I do think that, you know, I have a bias. I'm a public school person. I always have been and I believe in what we do in public schools. My bias is that we don't have a level playing field when it comes to charter. And the concern that I have is that we're paying out of a school district about three times for a charter child as to what we're getting in for a regular child. I don't think that's a fair situation. So, as much as we sort of protest that, I haven't seen great moves in, in any direction in helping it. But I think we have to keep protesting because it's not a level playing field. It just isn't. At one point, when charter schools were first coming into being, there were also things such as no interest loans that the state were putting up for buildings and materials. And we don't get them. So, those are the issues that I have.
And to add to that, the behavioral mandate that you described is not, is not, and in fact, actually behavioral challenges in charter schools are referred back into municipal schools.
And I, you know, based on my experience at least, I've seen children with special needs go off to charter schools and they're, they're often not there long and they're sent back to public schools because they, they really are not able to take care of those needs. I also doubt seeing very many of the students with second language going to charter schools.
Well, there's also no transportation.
Yes.
Quiet.
Another feature.
And if I can interrupt your narrative along that line, obviously it would be appropriate to ask you about the late start, the funding priority. Is Mr. Harold is here.
Yes, I saw him come in and I'm sure that that issue would-
Yeah, well, I suspect and it will. And Steve, you'll have an opportunity to speak tomorrow night at the council meeting if you, if you so desire. This is, that will be a public hearing, where the public can talk.
I just wanted to listen back today.
I'm sorry?
I just wanted to listen.
Okay, good, good. That's, that's where you're for. That's why we call it a hearing. That's, that's where you're for, that's why we call it a hearing. And so, Regina, if you could just talk about, I, I know there's an enormous complicated narrative that goes with this, but the decision, if you could just describe or expand on the decision this year?
The decision on late start, in my mind, is actually an economic consideration. There are approximately now two hundred schools across the country who have gone to late start. There's also some who already had late start. It was about two hundred who had gone. The research says, because it's skating rhythm of teenage kids, that their sleep pattern is different from adults. And there's also some research, although it's not conclusive, that says if you provide a later start for your adolescents, then there's an increase in their performance level. So, all things being wonderfully equal, and money wasn't a consideration, then I think it'd be great to have late start. But that's not the case. So, I will tell you where I stand, where the administrative team stands. To do this year's proposal and to provide enough transportation to do late start, which would also affect the timing of the elementary schools and the middle school, not just the high school, was an additional sixty-eight thousand dollars. We don't have an additional sixty-eight thousand dollars. And because I'm sure that someone would say, what are your other educational needs? I brought a list. Late start's not here, it'd be down here. There may indeed be a few students who have medical issues with the early start at the high school level. If that's the case, and there's medical documentation, we have a vehicle to work with that, and we'd be happy to work with those few parents. I think for most students, that whether they're starting a half an hour later or not, is not going to affect their academic achievement. That's my opinion. I've been in education forty-seven years, the last twenty-one was superintendent. I think that someone said to me, why didn't you try to do late start at Frontier Regional? Because we, that was, it's a separate system there, I've got four elementaries and one high school. And I could easily have done that, but I would be considered out of my mind to even propose that, because that's a different way of living, it's an rural area. People get up early. Kids get up early. We all got up early. And did some of us suffer from not having slept in the morning, probably, but somehow we all made it, and some of us became very good students, in spite of it. I think the other thing that's new nowadays is the whole issue of technology. And we have a lot of studies that say, kids going to sleep with their phone under their pillow, being on the computer just before bedtime interrupts their sleep outs. So, I don't know that if we do late start, that we're going to change any of that. And therefore, I'm not sure that that's worth the sixty-eight thousand dollars. In fact, I don't think it is worth the sixty-eight thousand dollars. So, I'm not a proponent of late start. The administrative team is not in favor of late start. And if indeed the school committee will make that decision to do it, then that's up to the school committee, they have ultimate decision-making. But it will not be with the recommendation of the administrative team.
You have, in, in the district, we have, we have schools that excel and some schools that do not, some, some schools that are underperforming. And is it your intent to re-channel that sixty-eight thousand, that, let's call it method sixty-eight thousand, but that appropriate those funds to boost opportunities and programs at those underserved schools?
Yeah, I, I have a whole list here of, of educational needs for students that I think outweigh the cost of buses. And just quickly, because I know you're interested, and I do want to get out there, because you're going to see these things again next year and the year after, because you can't do them all at once. Under elementary, we don't have reading recovery teachers anymore in our schools. Reading recovery is an expensive program, but it pays off, and there's a lot of research to support that. They work with very few kids, and they work with them at the first, second, and sometimes the third grade level, usually first and second. They give them the basis, they check them on later, and then these are kids that do not need special ed services later on, or at least not as many. We don't have reading recovery kids, the teachers in our elementaries. We only have two technology specialists as of this budget. We really need one in each school. There's no librarians in your elementary schools. So, you need something called a media center specialist, who can do the library part and do the technology part. And you need them to be in one school at a time, so they can schedule in classes of students, and everyone gets the benefit of both the literary and the technology part. They also need to be helping teachers with the technology. You need one in each school, we don't have them. You don't have anything close to having any sort of foreign language offered at the elementary level. We know that's where kids learn best, a second language. If you talk with principals, they will tell you, you don't have enough art and music in your elementary schools. Math coaches, unheard of. We need desperately another half-time psychologist, because we're getting more and more student needs. Families are in crisis, their kids are in crisis. I've got in one elementary school, three kids, and remember, we're, we're K through five. I've got three kids in one elementary school who are currently hospitalized for mental health issues. We need another special education teacher at the elementary level, because our numbers, we're running about twenty-six percent of special ed needs as a percentage of our student body. Middle school, we have what was the life skills program, it's called GOLs, these are for cognitively impaired youngsters. I need at least another point six of a teacher, because I've got too many kids with one teacher right now, an aide. Math and literacy coaches, we don't have them at the middle school. And that's where I also need another point five psychologist, for the same sorts of reasons. High school, foreign language. I've got some classes of foreign language, and that, that last year in Latin, we had thirty-six kids in one class, beginning Latin. We also have situations where our higher level French, I only have one French teacher. So, you know, if we're looking at French three, four, or five, I have times in which students have done one, two, and three, and they have to wait a year and a half before they can do four and five, in-between times, because we can't offer it every year. Physical education, we just did a pre-assessment in terms of civil rights compliance. We don't meet the standards for physical education at the high school, because the mandate is that you have physical education every year. We don't have that. Special education, I've got twenty-six kids to warn for special education services at the high school. It's the highest numbers we've got in the district or at the high school. District one, technology devices. We've done a wonderful job in Northampton of the capital planning. I believe you have a five-year plan, this is the last year, looking to fund a hundred thousand dollars for technology. Infrastructure, it's absolutely wonderful, and I commend all of you for it. But we don't have devices for kids to use. I mean, you have to do the infrastructure first, there's no doubt about that. But for instance, I'm going to be recommending next week to the school committee that we use, that we go with MFAST testing one more year, and not PAR, the reason for that is, well, there's several reasons, one of which is we don't have enough devices for the kids who need to take the testing to do it all at once within the timeline that we have. And there are some other reasons as well, which I'll go into the school committee. And I think one of the big things you're missing is the secondary director of curriculum and assessment. We were fortunate to be able to hire a person this year. It's supposed to do K through twelve, but in all honesty, she's trying to coordinate and work through the elementary and part of the middle school. I don't have anyone who's trying to coordinate and work with the high school level, as much as I'm trying to pull in the assistant principal, which isn't fair to the high school. You, you just can't, I mean, in the central office right now, you've got a superintendent, a business manager, and one curriculum person. That's it. State keeps putting mandates out. We've got twelve new mandates. Teacher evaluation system, now they want us to do surveys next year, mandated surveys. Kids are going to do surveys on teachers, and youngest kindergarten, by the way, and teachers are going to do surveys on principals and other central office people. So, what I found out today, because I missed this somehow, the state is working with a company to do surveys. There's one survey that's twenty questions, there's another survey that's forty-five questions, it could take up to a whole period for a kid to do it, and they're supposed to do it at the high school level and all their teachers. To coordinate and calibrate all that information, school districts, if they use these tests, have to pay for it. I missed that point. Found that out. So, you know, the mandates keep coming, and, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but when we get back to the issue of where does late start fall, it's not a priority in my book, because you have too many other things that affect too many youngsters, where the need is there. And I honestly do not believe that late start is going to make that difference for the number of students we think it will, and if indeed there's a medical issue, and there's a problem, and I'm not denying there might be, we are equipped to work with that family, the doctor involved, and do something to adjust that child's schedule, and we're happy to do it.
And, and there are two other questions here, but one quick follow-up, the, the high school, where does it rank in, in the pantheon of the state, for instances, as for levels of achievement and performance?
It's level one, the high school's a level one.
So, we have a high function in the high school?
Yes, very much so. But since I'm here and since you're asking, you have an interesting high school, you have wonderful AP courses, and you have a number of them, and I think they belong there. But we have a very unique and very diversified student body. We do not have all AP-type students. And what I think is missing is some of the things that we need to have in place for those students who are second English language learners, who have specific needs in terms of either mental health or in terms of special needs. We need more help in those areas. And we can't have everything geared to one sort of student. And I think that this is a wonderful community, I really love it, I fall in love with, with what you have offered here, I think you've got a basic, wonderful community and school system, and I really enjoyed working with the people this year. But I think you have to broaden your perspective in terms of the types of people we have in our schools, the types of families who live in this community. They don't all live in one area. And I, I think that we're shortchanging some of these, some of these groups, and I, I think you need to work in that direction.
I appreciate your commentary on that. Counselor O'Donnell, and then Counselor Shera, and then Counselor LaGuard. And let me...
I know.
...point out that we're going to have a number of those students queuing up outside in a little bit, but, and we have the fire department to come too, so the, but, no, 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 please don't apologize, this is, this is actually critical, so, and this is the most significant portion of the budget that we approve, so it's, it's appropriate that we give it all due attention.
I just wanted to haul past, you know? No, my, my question's very straightforward. How much is the, the bus pass that families pay to use the bus? Do you know approximately?
Do you know?
It's a couple hundred dollars.
It's like three hundred, and then there's a reduction based on the number of kids you have in your household. I get a certain child discount, because I have two kids.
Okay. Is there any, is there any waiver of that?
Yes, if you're free and reduced.
Yes, if you're free and reduced.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess my only, my only concern is, and I don't know that it is a concern, but it's just a question, is there a kind of a donut hole between people who get, families who get a waiver and those who have to pay this money? Have you heard any, that it's a hardship in any way? Because there hasn't always been a bus fee, is my understanding.
No.
And it kind of builds off the way you ended your, your previous comments about how we, you know, we do live in a, we like to think we live in a diverse, you know, district, and we want to make sure that everyone is served and can get to, get to school and learn and stuff.
And, and I guess what I would say is, I certainly would hope that you never do away with high school busing, because there will be kids who will not be able to go to school.
Well, no, in fact, my concern is the opposite. My question is if it's too restrictive, if, if the, the bus fee is restrictive...
I think that...
I'm sorry, just to clarify, I just want to make sure it is available to everybody.
Okay, great. There is, there is free and reduced students have to still, their parents still have to apply to have them ride on the bus, but there is no fee for that. However, everyone gets charged a late fee if they miss the deadlines. And I believe there are three times a year that you can access the bus. Yes, I can see him shaking his heads. So, I, I think the, the issue is that the free and reduced people do indeed have access to the bus transportation. I don't know how it works with families that are sort of, sort of a little bit above.
But you haven't heard that, so...
But I have not heard that, so I think it's working.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Counselor Shera.
Particularly your, the list of, of things that are needed at the elementary level, do you speculate if, if some of those things were particularly arts and things like that were added back in, might that help with the kids that are choicing out at that elementary level?
I'd like to think so, and I would say that based on my experience, I had an elementary school where we lost art and music for one year. We also lost a number of students. There was private funds put back in for those things, and when we restarted, we started getting school choice kids back in, but we didn't get back the residents, the state where they had chosen out. So, I would, I do think that there's a correlation, and I think that parents are very much interested in having the arts, it's part of their way in your elementary school program, as it should be. And I think that it might be helpful. I can't guarantee it, but I think it...
Counselor LaGuard.
Yes. When will the school committee be bringing this up on the late start?
What they voted, what the school committee voted is that February of next year, after they have had, starting in September through February or thereabouts, daily counts as to who's receiving a bus pass and who actually rides on a daily basis. They will again look at this issue, because they want to see, as I understand it, the thought is that if few enough kids ride the bus, then they might be able to do away with the bus. I think that's unlikely, in my perspective and my experience, because the distance involved when you do away with one bus, you're going to have kids on the bus much longer. I, I think that you have to really look at a lot of factors in that. One thing that I feel I failed this year is I wanted an ultimate decision on yes or no. And I would say that that's what the school board has to do next year. They have to make a decision, because this is five years in the making, takes a lot of time and energy, a lot of uncertainty, and you just have to make that decision. If you're going to put the money toward it, then do it. If not, vote, you're not going to do it. But it'll be up, up for the next budget, approximately February, when we start doing budgets.
Right, and I also agree with you on the arts and music, I think there is a tremendous amount of value in that.
I was also surprised to see you don't have an orchestra program in your schools. That made a big difference in our schools, when we put that in, we grew it over the twelve years, it really made a big difference.
Superintendent Nash, thank you again. I appreciate your candor, and, and also very grateful for the time you've moved to our school system.
Thank you. I've enjoyed it, and I've enjoyed working with so many people here, so thank you very much, it's been my pleasure to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, FD, and I'm going to alert the folks out in the hallway who are ordering the pizza. Ah, you guys ready to get this?
I've been here for a while.
And as usual, I'm going to ask Assistant Chief Nichols and Deputy Chief Norris to join me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
55.
You're on top.
Welcome.
You're welcome.
No, we, every, every changing, and we've been struggling since I had the number.
Gentlemen, thank you, and I'm sorry about putting you on the hurry up.
Let me ask you a question. Is there a time constraint? Did you like a more abbreviated presentation?
Yeah, I think if we could, yeah, the next meeting was scheduled for in about four minutes. You don't have to do a four-minute presentation. They've been alerted that there will be, it will be running late, so...
What I was going to do is sort of give you an update on fiscal 14 and some of the changes there as the EMS system matured, but I think I'm going to focus more just on fiscal 15 and sort of how the department has changed over the years to evolve into really a fire rescue department. If you remember, years ago, there were a number of things. First of all, the fire department didn't do emergency medical services. There were far more structured fires. It was common to see me coming before counsel for a half a million dollar transfer in overtime based on either a number of injuries or absences. And we've made great stride in all of those, most notably is really taking the EMS system, growing it, and then transitioning to a true fire rescue department in this coming fiscal year. So first, I'm going to ask Deputy Chief Norris just to give you sort of a sense of the EMS program as we go into next year, and then ask Assistant Chief Nichols just to give you a quick overview of fire and operations.
So, good evening. So right now, the fire department currently has five ambulances. They're all licensed at the paramedic level, it's the highest level pre-hospitality in the state of Massachusetts. Along with that, we have two engine companies that are also licensed as paramedic first response engines. That actually, that program was implemented last April, so we're coming upon the first fiscal year conclusion in terms of the operation of that program, and we'll do a chance to evaluate that both operationally and also fiscally, how that's working. So far, just looking at it from the outside, it's going well. We always had the staff on there that had the training to do it, we just never had the ability to get them the equipment and supplies to do the job they're trying to do. So it has made, in my opinion, a significant improvement in terms of patient care out there. We're doing about 6,000 transports a year. Most of them go to CDH, and then the other ones typically went on the base, to trauma center or the pediatric calls.
How many?
We're up around 6,000. And then we're still doing mutual aid to some of the surrounding communities just as they bring in mutual aid to us, and we also, because of the hospitals here in our community, we do get a lot of requests for the ALS intercepts. An intercept, an ALS intercept is when they have an ambulance on scene, but they don't have the level required, a paramedic level, to do the job based on the state protocols, so they have to call us. And we get that call because they're coming to Northampton to the hospital. So that's a quick snapshot of the system.
What do you see the trend? Are there numbers that track in trend, that are going to expand?
The trend is going up a little based on the age of the community, surrounding communities.
All right. I'm sorry, Dwayne.
Well, it's all right. No problem. Operationally, the department, as the chief mentioned, we're transitioning to the fire rescue service out through there. I think over the years, we've really done a good job of integrating both of those. We really maintain two-engine companies as a minimum throughout the city and use the people at the ambulances, if available, cross-staff, other pieces, the rescue, the ladder, things like that. So it really, it's a big value, I think, in that our people are cross-trained with the EMS certification and then certainly having the firefighter skills to be able to benefit the community that way. Operationally in the department, I think we've done a good job to try to manage injured-on-duty status. We maintain that all the time throughout the year. I know I have two retirements coming up this year. One's not job-related, the other one is job-related, but that's probably the only injured-on-duty, basically disability that we've had in a number of years out there. And we really manage our people, I think, with the lifts that we have in the ambulances, the power lift systems that lift the stretchers up. We do training continually with how to lift proper, you know, proper lifting procedures and things like that to try to maintain that. We also maintain fire prevention out there. As we know, fires are down nationally, but we still need to maintain that service out there because we still, I think the chief mentioned, we still have how much of a data loss last year?
Just approach of $3 million in fire O.O.S.
So it's, you know, we're having fires, but they seem to be a little bit more significant. But, you know, nationally, fires are down, but we still need to just keep in the back of the mind that we still need to keep the staffing levels up there. So, you know, operationally, say, you know, with the suppression forces, EMS people, fire prevention, just trying to keep everything running and status quo as we can.
And I'd just like to mention that Deputy Chief Norris did a phenomenal job helping me wrestle with the Excel spreadsheets and prepare the budget, and Assistant Chief Nichols does a great job managing the schedule so we maximize sort of the shift flow we have, the people above the minimum, to reduce overtime, and we've had a constant trend. So fiscal 15, the budget is about $5.5 million, and a reasonable question would be, what do you get for that? What's the level of service? As Dwayne said, 24 hours a day, we have two-engine companies, a shift commander, and between two and three ambulances and staff. In sort of last year's dramatic labor management settlement, we're now actually working together and looking at some scheduling options to have a third ambulance and more cross-staffing of equipment. But some perspectives, before the fire department took over EMS, we had 10 people on duty. We now have approximately three more, but we're running between, well, we have five ambulances, we're running three. So that represents sort of that shift from the fire orientation to more that rescue orientation. And every fire we've had, we've had ambulances available and been able to meet national standards, and that includes the arson fires we had with the multiple events occurring. The ambulances were on calls, freed up, and so it complements what we're able to do rather than detracts from that. So in terms of beyond that, there are also about 60 services that the fire department offers, ranging from CPR education, which Chris is leading an initiative in partnership with coming year, to installation of car seats, fire signature training, those hidden things when we go out and put someone's smoke detector in that are sort of unseen, that the department does a great job in. As we look at the budget itself, there is one thing that's counterintuitive. One, overall, there's a change of .05 in a part-time position that's going up, but there are four salaries being reduced, and that's because of the closure of the federal SAFER grant. Deputy Chief Norris had applied for that several years ago. It's a four-year grant. The grant ended this year. Those four positions are taken out of the budget. However, with those four positions out, the budget still increases fairly dramatically, and that's a reflection on the contractual settlement and the labor costs as we go down the road, as well as an adjustment sort of for trend, looking at some EMS supplies, and we've also incorporated the police department's semi-automatic filibulator program into our budget for management as well. So those are some of the quick things. As we go forward, one of the things Dwayne said, there's a reduction in fires. I never thought I'd sit before a finance committee and say there's a reduction in fires, but it really is true nationwide. We still have to be ready, we have to be vigilant, we have to have the resources, but we've refocused those resources to the advantage of the community. That means our people experience less fire but have to be ready. So we're putting more effort into training and specifically live-fire training as we go forward. The staffing configuration, again, we're working with our local and with the mayor to look at some options, but will remain relatively the same, providing the same level of service. With those four positions gone, that decreases the number of extra people we have, and will put more pressure on overtime. However, this is the second year that we've actually been able to turn money back in the budget. So we're going to have to manage that. Dwayne's going to have to double down with Mia on that, but we're fairly positive that we're actually going to be fine with that as we go forward. And let's see. During the year, we anticipate seven openings based on people leaving. I've heard one of our people is going to go into the Navy last week, so it seems every time we get some people on board, we have some more openings. Similar to the police department, it's a much more mobile workforce that we're seeing. And some of our other initiatives in this coming year are to harness technology for ambulances and GPS, and look at a bigger city system to help out with record-keeping, data management, and fire prevention. So that gives you sort of the quick thumbnail, probably longer than you wanted and more than you ever wanted to know? But for $5.5 million, that's what you get.
Counselor Murphy, then Counselor LeBart. Oh, just, I was going to ask about the four positions, but it sounds like with seven leaving, attrition's going to take care of it.
Right.
No, there's chairs for everybody still, nobody gets cut off.
So we're actually in a hiring process right now, and even considering those four being gone, sort of phased them out already, there are a number of positions open. And when we look into the crystal ball, Deputy Chief Manas is predicting seven. We were predicting five, but sometimes he's right.
And, you know, even though we theoretically had, we were fully staffed last year, and we tried really hard to do that, we're still looking at $400,000 in overtime. So if we start now losing bodies and have, what contributes to the overtime staying there? Because that was one of the big incentive stuffs to staff up, was to reduce our overtime expense and have people. But even when we have people, we have overtime. What contributes to that?
Sort of the catch-22 of you can have people, you can have overtime, and which is more expensive? We've tried to look at sort of the level of shift flow we have to minimize overtime. Compared to other communities, we actually compare really well for the amount of overtime. For example, if you look at Andover, the $1 million overtime budget, Norwood, Marlboro are now struggling, and the one thing you hear from fire departments our size is the management of overtime. I even read an article that came from Hawaii on the management of overtime. So it is a very common thing in the fire service, but it's really pulling that together.
Yeah. I went on vacation, and the headline in the Hawaiian newspaper was, "Fire Department in the City Over Overtime." So it's like... Coincidence? I don't know.
So Counselor Murphy, when we have an opening, that salary sits there unused. That will then go to contribute to overtime to pay that difference. The further we go, the more overtime you're going to have, and that's going to become a problem. So we've got to keep that in check, and that's going to be our challenge during the next year.
So basically, the overtime comes from having to maintain a mandatory shift strength. So you've got to backfill people, and without the people to backfill with, yeah, which is why we were trying to keep you fully staffed so that there'd be more people to pull.
And it's not even so much a mandatory shift strength, it's the capability to staff two engines, a shift commander, and three ambulances. And I think that's what really resonates with the residents of the community, is that level of service.
Well, I mean, unlike the police, you have one guy to a car, that's the team that functions. You need multiple bodies to make an engine work. So the engine isn't useful if there's only two guys on it.
Right. So some departments, some of your volunteer departments, they show up on scene with a driver. Well, that's great, and there's a fire truck, and it has shiny red lights, but it's not going to do much until other people get there. So we staff ambulances with two people. We, as Assistant Chief Nichols said, complement that to reduce injuries with some other responses, and three people on engine companies is typically what we do.
Counselor LeBart.
I want to thank the chief, the department, for all the hard work that you do. It's very difficult, I think, between the police department and the fire department of controlling the overtime. You cannot tell when you're going to have a fireman or firewoman getting hurt, or a police officer, a man and woman, getting hurt. You do not know if there's going to be a medical problem. So I think that you can really see that there's a change going on in this department because I know, I know how much money for years and years that you had difficulties with. I want to thank your department for everything that you're doing, and also having that great bridge between the city and especially the Kool-Aid Dixon Hospital with Dr. Conway and them. I think that that is so valuable. Thank you.
Counselor Shera.
I also want to thank you for doing a great job, and congratulations on this, completing this transition period where you're now fully integrated, the rescue and fire, and congratulations on the grant that you just got last week. And are there other, since you're losing these four positions because that grant is coming to an end, are there more on the horizon that you're going for and hope to get to?
Well, the programs are still in place. They've changed somewhat, and that they don't, for the staffing ones, they don't require a community sort of year to pay. So typically, it would be the federal government pays for so much, and either percentages it down, or the community pays one year. Now it's just they sort of give out the money. But we really need to look at, how does that help us meet some national standards? We've come further by adding EMS and meeting national standards than we did by adding sort of the SAFER grant. Every year, the grant period is open for both the federal FIRE Act, which is sort of your safety equipment and apparatus and things, and the SAFER grant. We have a discussion with the mayor on what's sort of reasonable to pursue in the next year, and that's how that sprinkler grant was pushed through.
The problem with the SAFER grants is you get the money, you hire the people, but then the grant's out, and then you're staring at a hole of X thousand dollars that you have to fill. And we're looking at the attrition lined up nicely.
And my career, which is getting on too long, I've never had to lay anyone off, and it's the attrition that's enabled us to do that, because if we were fully staffed with no attrition, we would have to look at layoffs. Any other questions?
Gentlemen, well done. You'd be good auctioneers.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Schedule a slot every year.